Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of January 25th, 2024. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act. Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law, knows that the 2024 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the township's civic clerk website at least 10 days in advance of tonight's, of this evening's meeting, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. First, we have an oath of office. We have a new member joining us tonight.
Well, actually, a repeat member back.
Well, yeah, he spent enough time away that he forgot about it.
Would you raise your right hand? I state your name.
I raise my hand.
Do solemnly swear.
Just a moment, sir.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I shall, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
Planning Board Member Alternate Number Two.
Planning Board Member Alternate Number Two.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So, welcome back, Raj. Okay, with that, we may have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please.
Mr. Delkor is absent. Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Scoboe.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Radowitz.
Here.
Mr. Depp.
Here.
Committeeman Lapani.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Here.
Vice Chair Peason.
Here.
Mr. Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Polis.
Present.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Right. Videographer's in the back room, so.
He's not here.
Well, he is here. He's in the back, running the, yep, running the show.
He's in the back hiding.
Okay, first up, we have a couple of meeting minutes for consideration. First, we have a motion to approve the January 11th, 2024 reorganization meeting minutes.
Members eligible are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Radowitz, Committeeman Lapani, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli, Vice Chairman Peason, and the Chair.
Thank you.
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
Second. Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Uh, excuse me, Committeeman Lapani.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi.
Yes. Next, we have a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of January 11th, 2024.
All members eligible except Mr. Radowitz, who voted on the reorg minutes.
I'll make the motion. Thank you.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapani.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi.
Yes. Next, we have planning board business. The 2023 Board of Adjustments Annual Report, which was adopted January 17th of this year. Mr. Polis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another way to describe this is basically correspondence. This is an FYI, action that was taken by the Board of Adjustment and sending it over to the Planning Board. So no action necessary from the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you, and for all those similar reports that, that we had drafted two weeks ago. We do not have consideration of ordinances since we kind of moved along pretty quickly. I will go to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. If there's anyone that would like to provide commentary, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Again, I ask to refrain from any discussions on warehouses directly or indirectly, and please keep comments to five minutes. And also a reminder, this is not a Q and A session. However, you're free to ask questions. The Board's not obligated to answer them, but they may choose to do so.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. The governing body of Hillsborough had a reorganization meeting at the beginning of this month, and there was information given regarding the appointment of township officials, professionals, professionals. But there was no information given regarding the identity of the Planning Board Attorney. Is there a reason why the Planning Board Attorney is not included with the professionals at the beginning of the year?
Because the Planning Board Attorney isn't appointed by the Township Committee according to law.
All right.
The Township, the Planning Board appointed me on January the 11th at reorganization.
So the Planning Board, uh...
Right. All the planning officials or professionals you see here, we approved or voted on them for this year here at our reorg. The Township Committee does not do that.
So is there a contract between Attorney Bernstein and either the Township or the Planning Board?
Yep, there's kind of...
There's one with the Township.
There's an agreement on file.
And that, I believe, is now on file, and I believe I have contracts to review and sign regarding the Planning Board.
I'm sorry?
I have contracts that I have not yet reviewed that I've received from the Planning Board regarding the Planning Board.
So, so there is a contract for your position as Planning Board Attorney?
Yes, there is, but it is not, it is not on file yet.
And that's with the Planning Board?
That is with the Planning Board, yep.
Do you also have a contract with the Township?
Yes.
All right, and, and payment is made by the Planning Board to you?
Payment is made through the Township, either relative to the general files through the Township Planning Board budget, or through the applicant's escrow accounts, all those happy people sitting behind you. And their clients pay for my fees, Mr. Mayhew's fees, relative to escrow accounts.
So you're chosen by, you're chosen by the Board members. Are the Board members all volunteers?
Yep.
Yes? Okay, and so who, who would be signing the contract for the Plan, for the Planning Board with Mr. Bernstein?
It would be the Chairman.
Okay. Now, this Board, this Hillsborough Planning Board is a quasi judicial Board. Is, are there any requirements of the, the persons who are on this Board as far as knowledge of land use or, or any, any kind of requirements?
I guess whatever stated in the ordinance, and then there's some training that is provided, particularly for the newer members.
Newly appointed members of the Boards, whether it is this Board or the zoning Board, are required to take a course that is given by the New Jersey planning officials, I believe, within 18 months of appointment. Otherwise, no, and the appointments are based upon the provisions of law in terms of what class of member they fall under.
So there, there is some kind of training that the Board members do have to, um...
The new Board members.
Only, and, and what, and what is that? What length of time is that?
I believe it's 18 months from appointment.
18 months from appointment when they have to, have to...
They have to take the course. If they fail to, they may be removed.
So they have 18 months from the time they're appointed to make, to take that course?
Correct.
So initially, they don't have to take that course, but they can be on this Board and make decisions on this Board?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the position of Attorney, Planning Board Attorney, I, I think Mr. Bernstein is here already 23 years, is it? Is that an automatic renewal, or do you have to apply?
No. It's an annual requirement to be tortured on an ongoing basis. It's an annual contract. I have just been reappointed in my 24th year.
24.
As Planning Board Attorney, and it's an annual appointment determined by the Board.
So do you...
I, I know where you're going to go with it. Towards the end of the year, every calendar year, there's requests for proposals for all of our professionals. They're one-year contracts, and it's, it's open to the, you know, it's, it's noticed publicly. Anyone is free to submit a proposal based on the various, you know, criteria that's set forth in that RFP, and then whoever submits it, first we have to deem that submission as complete, then there's a, I'll say, I'll say a small committee that each individual member will rate all those applications, and generally, the highest score will be the one that gets recommended to that governing Board, and then on the reorg night is one that name gets brought up for that position, and it's up to these Board members to either, you know, vote yea or nay.
So have there been other applicants, or is this just Attorney Bernstein that...
I think, I think this year, you were the only one.
This year, I was the only one for a change.
Right.
I guess nobody else wants to torture.
Perhaps it's downside of broadcasting our meetings.
Okay, and for the position of Chairman, is that also an automatic renewal, or how is the Chairman of the Board planning Board chosen?
At reorg, every year at reorg, I mean, Mr. Bernstein actually chairs the reorg meeting until a Chairman is chosen, and it's same nomination process, very similar to the Township Committee does when choosing Mayor and Deputy Mayor. It's, you know, it's an appointment by fellow members.
So is there a time limit, time limit when Attorney Bernstein has to submit that contract, signed contract?
More than 10 minutes after I've gotten it, which was tonight. It'll be on file probably by next week, Ms. Janusik, so you can have a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is the mic on? David?
Suzanne Oxey, 425 Willow Road. A question about the process. I do see that there's a vacant seat on this Board, and wondering what the process is for applicants, residents to apply for that.
And that, that, that's one of probably the hardest seat for us to fill, because that person is going to be serving both here and on the Environmental Commission. It's a special seat that is, serves as a liaison between the two Boards.
So the vacant seat number six has other, you're saying it's an Environmental Commission representative?
Mm-hmm. They will be on both Boards.
So that person has not been appointed yet?
I haven't, and nothing's come onto my agenda yet, so I'm...
It's an important committee.
So I'll give, so there were people that were asked, that were existing people that were on, so Mr. Julian, who left, had been our dual member for, I don't know, 15 years or so, maybe, long time. And it's, so it's a lot of meetings, and the people who were existing on the EC at, right, that were asked if they'd like to, said they could not, they were too busy, which is, you know, it's a, it's a volunteer position, right? So there are some new members that were appointed that we will poll once they became members of the EC to see, we can't ask them until they're officially on the EC, but we are at the, how do we say this? We are at the mercy of the applicant to agree to be on both seats, because by law, it has to be someone from the EC, cannot be another seat. And also, to be fair, the applications have been so ongoing, some of these applications for two years, a new applicant, even if they were on the EC, would be, have to pretty much recuse themselves from most of all the applications going on right now, unless they wanted to watch some 300 or 400 hours of testimony to be qualified to listen to.
Not that much.
They would have to recuse because they...
They would have to watch all the video of all the meetings.
Yeah.
And sign an affidavit that they would then be allowed to participate in the meeting.
Do your members have to do that, too?
If they miss a meeting, yes, they do.
And the brand-new members?
The brand-new member.
Would have to go look at it all?
So Mr. Depp, obviously, would probably not be able to listen to anything that is from prior testimony, because he just became a member, so he would have to recuse himself until he was caught up.
And the Environmental Commission is filled? Are there vacancies on that?
I believe we filled most of those. I'd have to refresh my memory, but yes.
Okay, good. Also, my second comment is to you, Sean Lapani, is to thank you for inviting the public to have a seat. It is much more comfortable, and I appreciate it, so thank you for that. It was very gracious.
Okay, anyone else from the public?
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. Just to echo Suzanne's concerns, I would hopefully present to all of you how important it is to have that environmental person on board. As I'm sure you all know, so many of these applications involve wetlands, traffic, air pollution, other kinds of issues like that, with, which having that person as a resource is so critical for helping assist the Planning Board in its decision-making, so please help yourselves and help all of us by strapping in somebody who won't know what they're getting into to come on board. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to this evening's application to public hearing. First up, Coherent Corp., File Number 23-PB-15-SPV, with the time of decision of March 18th of this year, Block 200.06, Lot 19, and with Lot 18 reference, commonly known or referenced as 132 Stryker Lane, and also 126 Stryker Lane as reference. The application is seeking a minor site plan approval, C-bulk variances and waivers to install an additional 6,000-gallon, okay, L2, I'm, um, liquid nitro, liquid nitrogen above-ground storage tank on a concrete pad base on the property, which is in the LI, otherwise known as the Light Industrial Zone. So I know representing the applicant is a familiar face, Mr. Ogradnick.
Good evening, members of the Board. It's been a few months. I've still watched all your videos, so.
You want to be a member?
In my spare time, that's what I do.
Suffering from insomnia, I hear.
My name is Mike.
You got a free night, don't you, on Thursday?
I know. My name is Michael Ogradnick. I'm an attorney at SavoShok Law Firm. I'll be here on behalf of the applicant Coherent Corporation. This is an application as summarized to construct a 13-by-29 concrete pad to hold a liquid nitrogen tank in an area where there's an existing equipment pad on the east side of the building. This is, this, there was, there's already a pad there that, that holds industrial gases, and this pad was approved administratively under Application 98 PBS 21SR on January 4th, 2001. This company's been here in town for, for well over 20 years. We're proposing essentially to double the tank size so we can reduce the amount of deliveries and to have enough supply. Liquid nitrogen is colorless, odorless, non-corrosive, non-flammable, non-explosive, and is used for specialized manufacturing processes. Coherent Corporation is a global leader in manufacturing networking and lasers, is a vertically, vertically integrated manufacturing company that develops manufacturers' markets' engineered materials, optoelectric components and devices, and lasers for industrial communications, electronics, and instrumentation markets. Coherent was founded in 1971, operates in over 20 countries, and as I indicated, first got approval back in 2000, 2001. Site is located generally at the end of Raider Boulevard. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we came back, the town vacated Raider Boulevard at the end, when the bypass was built and Hillsborough Park expanded those two buildings on the end. The applicant is the only tenant in that 22,500-square-foot industrial manufacturing Again, owned by Hillsborough Park with the consent of the owner. They're, of course, a subsidiary of Larkin Associates, one of the oldest developers in Site is adjacent to the Route 206 bypass, is in a heavily wooded area. By my math, we're almost 600 feet away from a house at the end of the Steinmentz Road. Again, there's a, all separated by a heavily wooded buffer. Again, in the Light Industrial Zone, which does permit outdoor storage as a permitted use, so long as it's not within the 20-foot buffer, or we're well beyond that. This application was noted to necessitate two bulk variances. One, which I'll talk about in a moment, was to allow for outdoor storage in the front yard. That's 188-107-C1. However, when I was reviewing this today, I had recalled that we did the last application, and that, that roadway was, that public right-of-way was vacated. I do have a copy of that vacation that was just recently filed at the end of last year by the Township Attorney, so we don't have that variance for the storage in the front yard. So that's been eliminated. So the only variance in this application is under Section 188-107-182, where we're proposing a six-foot fence, or, yes, where five-foot is permitted. As our witness, Paul Foldvari will explain, there's a 6,000-gallon liquid nitrogen tank, holds about four to five days of supply. We're trying to double that, which will reduce trip generation from Air Products, who's the supplier. Paul's our facility manager, manager at this facility. We also have Henry Geisberg, who's a PhD, and he's the main scientist at this site, if anybody has any questions about the manufacturing processes or may, wants a little more detail onto the science of this. Our second witness is Joseph Freida. He's our professional engineer with the Falcon Group, who will explain the existing and proposed site plan conditions. Proof of notice publication in newspaper and to adjacent property owners has been provided in accordance with the MLUL. Copies have been submitted to the Board, and unless there are any legal questions, I would ask that our witnesses be placed under oath.
Okay. Going to be sworn out.
We'll get you when you come up.
Sure.
Thank you. You swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And for the record, just into a mic, can you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Paul Foldvari. Paul, P-A-U-L, Foldvari, F-O-E-L-D-V-A-R-I.
Thank you. Can you just explain who Coherent is and why do you, why you're here tonight?
Yes, thanks. We are a division of the Coherent Corporation. As said before, it's a large international corporation. We produce only one product, basically, and it's a photonic component of a laser device, laser devices, that, that's what we sell. Our production, we have 42 people, employees, right now, and the way our production is going right now, fortunately, it's, it's, it's a very good rate, but our 6,000-gallon liquid nitrogen tank gets, as stated, gets filled about every four, five, or six days at the most. And we are concerned that when it gets down to a very low, very low rate, that the delivery is either postponed, or in certain cases, they, Air Products will do a force majeure, because the nitrogen comes from Bethlehem, PA, and sometimes, whether it's a weather concern or other concerns, drivers can't get their tank trucks in there. So what we're proposing is to put a, a sister tank, is what it's called, another 6,000 gallons, which would then, in normal production, give us a, a fill-up rate of every maybe 10 to 12 days. That, you know, that, that's all around a better deal, only because less truck traffic in the area. We only get one delivery then, every 10 to 12 days, and that's, that's the basis of our, of our requirement for the 6,000-gallon tank. There was an issue on the, on the visual impact of this, and it is, it does extend a few feet from the building corner, but we are at the very end, as stated, we are at the very end of the landlord's property. And, oh, by the way, we are tenants. We do not own the building or the property. Anyway, we're at the end, and there is dense woods all around to the north and the east, and the only visibility is when you're directly in our parking lot, or maybe in the parking lot across the, our parking lot from the two new buildings that are there, and only on the north side. That, that is it. We're looking at the six-foot fence. We have a six-foot fence around that whole equipment area on the east side of the building, and in that whole equipment area, we have our, our chiller, which produces production, chilled water for the production. We have an emergency generator. We have an air conditioning unit for our UPS room, and we have blowers, fans for our acid and lead fume scrubbers. And that's all protected by the six-foot fence. It's locked all the time and secured with lights at, at night and so on. And the reason for the six-foot fence is really just protection against, you know, kids, I guess, or somebody that wants to just do something. So that, that's basically our, our requirement.
Any further questions for Mr. Foldvari?
Mr. Mayhew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you help explain, there's an existing tank, I noticed, on site. What is the structure that's to the south of the existing tank?
Oh, the, the silver-looking, that's an evaporator.
It, it's like develops, I guess, some condensation on the exterior?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, and I'm not, I can't technically explain, but the liquid nitrogen, which comes in as a liquid, then goes through the evaporator and turns into gas, and so we use the gas in the building.
Well, I'm a little bit confused by the, the plan that's on the screen. It shows two tanks. The more northern tank appears to be where the evaporator is located.
Right.
Are you relocating that?
Yes, that will have to be relocated, because the two tanks, according to Air Products, and then one of the drawings that we submitted, the two tanks are connected directly and to, I think that plan only shows one, but that basically the same exact evaporators will be next to each other, connected.
Oh, so in addition to a, a second tank, there'll be a second evaporator?
That's correct.
I guess it was hard to, to determine that from the, and you're not going to relocate the existing tank and the existing evaporator, are you?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
But, but onto a new pad, right there next to it. In other words, there's a new, I think it's 29 feet extra. We have to build a new concrete pad. And all the specifications for that are designated by Air Products.
Okay, so I apologize, I couldn't understand that from the drawing. So though you're relocating, well, if you're relocating existing tanks, see where it says "tank" written sideways above the proposed improvement, what goes into that area where the existing tank is?
The two, the two evaporators.
So there'll be...
Again, this is, this is a, an old, older, but the, the drawings that I submitted, that we submitted from Air Products, are a much cleaner designation of exactly how the equipment will go. Let me...
Well, I guess you've clarified it. So at the end of the day, there'll be two tanks and two evaporators.
That's correct. And the, you know, the evaporators are required next to the tank in order to use the gas.
Yes, understand. Okay. I think the only other questions I would have, Mr. Chairman, well, and maybe you're to appropriate, are there any precautions that the facility needs to take for potential leakage?
No. The tank, as I, the, the tanks have their own...
"tank," written sideways above the proposed improvement, what goes into that area where the existing tank is?
The two evaporators.
So there'll be...
Again, this is, this is an older, but the drawings that I submitted, that we submitted from Air Products, are a much cleaner designation of exactly how the equipment will go.
Well, I guess you've clarified it. So at the end of the day, there'll be two tanks and two evaporators?
That's correct. And the, you know, the evaporators are required next to the tank in order to use the gas.
Yes, understand. Okay. I think the only other questions I would have, Mr. Chairman, well, and maybe you're to appropriate, are there any precautions that the facility needs to take for potential leakage?
No. The tank, as I, the tanks have their own pressure relief valves, and the only, the only concern here is pressure. It is non-flammable, it is not explosive or anything like that, but the pressure relief valves are audible. So in other words, if we ever hear any kind of a whistling, or we were told by Air Products to call them. In the seven years of my tenure as the facility manager, we've never had an overpressure situation, and I understand that we didn't have one before that either. I understand also from Air Products that the tank itself has blowout panels, in the case of real overpressure, but we have been, again, we've never had any incidents.
So if the public or someone was in the parking lot, which is not very far away, it's just on the other side of the fence, there's no precautions that need to be taken?
No.
Additional?
No.
Okay. I think, Mr. Chairman, the rest of my questions would be directed to the site civil engineer, that I'm assuming will be coming up shortly.
Thank you, Paul.
Wait, do, no, no, no. I'm sorry. I've, so, to be clear, because you're removing the existing tank and adding two new tanks?
No, we're just relocating the existing tank.
Okay, so the two tanks that are shown in that picture, that are, say, two new tanks, then there's the tank that is, as Mark was saying, that's labeled "tank," is that being decommissioned? Or is, because, so there's two, the two tanks, you're only adding one tank and moving the other tank?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so that makes sense, so that you're just moving it to a new pad and adding additional tank?
That's it.
Okay. Is there the existing fence that you're replacing with another fence, is that just to make it newer because of the pad increase? Why?
No, there is a fence, an existing six-foot fence right there now, and we actually just have to make it larger for the, for the new pad.
So you're extending the existing fence?
We're extending it.
Moving it, okay.
That's correct.
And the, do you, is your facility a 24/7 facility? Is it seven days, nine to five?
It is, no, it's a 24-hour facility.
So there's people on site all the time to monitor the tanks?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hoist, any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe my questions or any of my suggested recommendations outlined in the report would be addressed by the next witness. Is that correct, Mr. Godding?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the dais? So I'm gonna open the public. Motion to open the public.
Come on, second.
One favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and just keep in mind, he's not the engineer, so, he's facilities, environmental health and safety, but technical questions will be for the next witness.
Susan Golliford Hunt Club Road. I know, we have a history. I have one question about a comment you made. Is there a more recent design than this one shown? You said there's a more updated or cleaner design, or is this the one they're voting on?
No, I submitted the Air Products design for the new...
Sorry, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we did submit the Air Products design for how the, how the tanks would be located along with the evaporators.
So they're the same, is this one just more applied to Air Products as opposed to what you do?
That's correct. This is a site plan for reference on the property, but these are, what's shown right now is Air Products illustration of the tank itself. There's another plan that shows the actual, the local, how do we bring that up? I don't know.
Which one do you have?
Do you have the other two?
I have this. I have the site plan, I have the tank drawing. Do you know the name, do you know the name of the one you would like?
Let me, can you get my book? Let me get my book here. I can give you, I forgot my...
Well, it looks like, it looks like this.
We should mark this as an exhibit. I believe we submitted it, but just in case.
Yeah, I know it was submitted, but...
I don't see that one.
So, this is a document entitled...
Integrated Layout. It's from Air Products. It's the details of the equipment, and I'd ask that this be labeled as A1, and I will sign and date it.
Do you have a question to ask on that?
Yeah, then, what they're doing is, the board will be voting on a combination of what you've just been provided and what was shown previously as a whole. Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other members from the public?
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way. I'm not sure if this is engineering or if it's facility, but I will try to ask the questions and then we'll find out. At your facility, do you use any other compressed gases besides nitrogen?
No.
Okay. With regards to the different equipment that you mentioned, do you know there are, I'll call them air conditioning units that are outside, I don't know whether you call those chillers?
No, those are regular air conditioning units.
Okay. Do you know how many of those you have that you use?
We use all of them. They're technically called rooftop units because that model usually goes on top of a roof, but because our building does not have a flat roof, they're just around the outside perimeter.
And do you know the actual number of them?
I think we have eight.
Okay. You mentioned an acid scrubber?
Yes.
Is that on the ground or is that on the roof?
The, they're inside the building in our utility room.
Okay. So as far as the equipment that's outside, there's the air conditioning units, there is the tank, are there any other items that make noise at your facility outdoors?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, air conditioning units, blowers of any kind, you mentioned a blower of some sort?
Yeah, they're, that's correct. I mean, they're just fans, they're exhaust fans.
And those are on the roof or those are...
Those are on, in the area of the fenced equipment area on the east side of the building.
And what purpose do those blower motors serve?
We have the equipment that's called fume scrubbers that take these fumes out of the production process and then just evacuate them into the atmosphere.
And the fumes are composed of what?
It, well, it's, one is called lead and the other one is called acid, that we use some acid in the production process. However, I can tell you that they are all approved and we have the documentation about how they work, you know, the state approval, some of the EPA and all of that, so they're just normal processes.
And the lead is airborne? Is that what I, you're saying?
It is, but it is extremely minute. Again, I can't speak for the actual chemical composition, but it is extremely minute.
And, I'm sorry?
No, I just wanted to clarify that at one point, the state did an ISRA study on our facility.
ISRA?
ISRA, Industrial Site Remediation Act, okay. And looking at, for example, looking at the lead scrubber, they took samples on the roof, they took samples at the end of the downspout of the rain coming off the roof into the woods, and they found no detectable lead.
Okay. The acid that you mentioned, what type of acid is that?
It's, well, it's phosphoric, yes, thank you.
And is that held in a tank that you use?
It's not held in a tank. We actually use it, we order it and it comes in bottles, and it's used in a very small dish on a, on a exhaust fume sink. It's used maybe twice a week to etch the product that we have.
And do you have equipment inside that scrubs this stuff before it comes out into the, to the outside air?
That's correct. That's what, yes, that's what they are, yes.
And with regards to the units that you have, have you ever done any measurements of decibel levels that are generated by the air conditioning units and all the other equipment that's running?
No, we have not. We didn't think it was ever necessary. There's nobody around, and it's just a normal, I mean, as far as, again, I'm not an engineer, but it's a normal sound of an air conditioner running.
Is that the question I should be asking the engineer, then, as far as decibel levels, or nobody's done them?
I have not.
Okay, all right. I live nearby, that's why. I hear your place at night. And so I guess the question is, if one were to inquire of your company, is there anyone who would talk to with regards to making sure those numbers are not super high?
Sure, that would be me, I think.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Maria Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. Your business is Coherent Corporation?
Yes.
And what is Air Products?
Air Products is the company that supplies us with the liquid nitrogen.
Uh-huh. So you are an existing business at this location?
Yes.
For how long?
Over 20 years.
Okay. So in order to have this business, you needed to come and get approvals originally from Hillsborough, from the planning board?
Originally, yes. I was not here, but yes, I mean, that's how it started.
Okay. So I don't understand how this is before the planning board now, when these are changes to an existing business, should this go before the Board of Adjustment?
The use is permitted, so there's no relief that's necessary before the Board of Adjustment.
The use is permitted?
Correct.
Okay. So I think in the paperwork, you're saying that there is, what you want to do is add a 6,000-gallon extra tank, but that's not all you're doing because you're also rearranging how things are on-site?
Right.
Where the tank, where is the, the tank that's there now in relation to where it's going to go?
Couple of feet away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically going to be a couple of feet. Right now, where the tank is, they're gonna have to move it to the new pad that's gonna be constructed.
And how big is this pad?
I think it's 13 by, I can't, 29, 13 by 29.
Okay, and the location where it's going to go, what is the surface covered currently? Is it pervious or impervious?
I guess right now it's pervious.
It's pervious, so you have to add, so you'll take away, you'll now have impervious coverage there?
That's correct. Technically, we're adding a couple of hundred feet, but we are, in as far as the original site plan goes, we are at 60% of the requirement, so this is not going to affect or exceed any threshold.
Okay, but now you're going to put two tanks and two evaporators here, so how much coverage is there gonna be of that?
We're only adding one extra concrete pad. The existing concrete pad where the tank is today stays, nothing happens to that. We're just adding an additional, adjacent to it, we're just adding another...
But I thought you were moving the original, the tank that's there currently, I thought you were moving it.
Yes, that's what I said, yeah, once we make the new pad, the existing tank will move into the new, into the new pad, onto the new pad.
Right, so, all right, so how much, how much area is that? Because you're not just moving one tank, you're moving two tanks, and the evaporator's going to be there also on whatever you're...
On the existing, on the existing pad.
How, is it close enough to the area where the new tanks are gonna go?
Couple of feet apart.
Uh-huh. What is this, what is this, this, this gas?
Liquid nitrogen.
Okay. Now, you've never had a leak there, you say?
That's...
What, what are the dangers of a leak? What, what, what happens to someone who comes in contact with, with this liquid nitrogen?
I think we can explain that nitrogen is 78% of our atmosphere to begin with. And if any of that escapes, it just goes into the air and you don't know it because it's existing already.
Okay, but isn't there, isn't there a danger caused by inhalation of this gas?
I'm sure there is, if you, if you concentrate it and, you know, that you do nothing else but breathe that, but in the normal, in the normal air, it's just...
So if something were to happen to one of these tanks and this liquid, and this liquid nitrogen went out, this would, this would have a very detrimental impact because it's very dangerous for people to breathe this?
Ms. Janusak, you're not an expert to cite that.
I'm asked, that's why I'm asking.
Well, you were, you were kinda making a statement that there is a danger.
No, no, I asked, is there, is there a danger if you inhale it?
And he already answered that.
What did he say?
No.
No.
There's no danger to inhaling?
No.
If there were, there were a lot escaping from this tank, there would be no danger to anyone in the, in the area?
No, because we have the, no, no, there wouldn't. We have the fence, we have the driveway, so in other words, it's not in any enclosed area. It's totally out into the open.
Okay, so if something were to happen to 6,000-gallon tank that, God forbid, somebody sabotaged it or did something, there would be no danger to anybody?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Rich Garmin, 53, Winding Way. I got an easy one. Are you really changing the delivery schedule? You're putting in a second tank because if you run into an issue with delivery, you could lose production, I guess, right?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay, so you said there'd be less deliveries. Are you changing the delivery schedule, or are you gonna keep it on there?
Oh, no, we would, we would definitely change it. It's actually a benefit for us as well as Air Products, you know, to have less of a delivery.
Right, so only one truck can fill both 6,000-gallon tanks?
Well, I don't know. That I don't know, I can't tell you, however, the 12,000 would not immediately all evaporate. So in other words, any fill at 12 days, you know, at the other end?
Right.
So it would either be one tank or the other. So there would always be, the whole idea is that there's always that reserve.
Yeah, I totally understand that, but if you cut the delivery schedule, you could run into a situation that at day 10, they're gonna deliver, and they can't, you miss two days, you still miss production. So that's why I'm asking, are you changing the schedule and reducing deliveries, or are you just gonna keep the six-day schedule and always have reserve?
No, the idea is to reduce the deliveries.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, seen none closed to public?
Next witness.
Well, don't we have to reopen? I don't know. It's okay.
And our, our next witness is our civil engineer? Thank you. Mr. Freida, could you be sworn in?
You swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. Joseph Frega, last name spelled F-R-E-G-A.
Could you just give the board the benefit of your professional experience as an engineer and how long you've been licensed, how long you've been doing this?
I am, I have a Bachelor of Civil Engineering degree from NJIT, and I have a Master of Engineering, Civil Engineering from Stanford University, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of New Jersey since, I believe, 2008, as well as active in 10 additional jurisdictions at one point, 23 total. I have not peered before this board, however, I have been accepted as a witness at numerous boards throughout the... I have not peered before this board. However, I have been accepted as a witness at numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey as well as New York State and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
We would ask that Mr. Fraga be accepted as an expert in the area of civil engineering?
Okay. Any gaps or actions taken against your license?
No.
Okay. Board members, we're, okay, please proceed.
Could I have the site plan? So as counsel has already discussed, the applicant is proposing, that's fine, is proposing the installation of one new additional 6,000 gallon liquid nitrogen storage tank. And as the counsel's, as applicant's first witness spoke about, we're also going to be relocating one existing tank that's already on the, at the site. We're proposing to install a concrete pad to support this new and relocated equipment. It's going to be located just to the south of the existing equipment location area and it's going to be placed in the sort of little grassed area adjacent to the parking lot. We're also proposing to install a six-foot fence around the perimeter. And besides that, the installation is relatively minimal, relatively straightforward. We are not proposing any other improvements to the site. There will be some nominal, you know, removal of some existing features such as a bollard and a portion of the existing fence. But this is, in my opinion, very straightforward equipment, utility equipment installation at a, you know, permitted use in the township and you know, in an existing industrial facility.
Just, there was a comment regarding the replacement of two trees and of course, the applicant would agree to replace those trees. I would just ask that the location of those trees be deferred to the township professionals. We'll put them wherever you want. Be an acceptable condition of the approval.
Mr. Mayhew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that the fence will be extended. Will the fence have slats to provide a little bit of screening, similar to the existing fencing?
We can definitely.
Well, I'm not asking for it. I just want to clarify if it is.
Yes.
Do you anticipate that creating any line of sight issues for the parking lot in the aisle?
I don't. You know, it's a relatively large parking lot. But I don't anticipate it having any impact on drivability in that area, no.
Okay. Did you get a chance to look at a review letter dated January 17th?
Yes.
And I guess the only comment we haven't touched upon at this point is comment number three about the increase in impervious cover. It was brought to my attention this morning that possibly there may be a stormwater management facility that was constructed in the early 80s, possibly as part of this overall industrial park. I don't know the sizing of the base and I don't know how much it was designed for. Certainly, the regulations have greatly changed since the early 80s. Would your applicant be adverse to trying to address the runoff from this increase in pervious air?
So, you know.
And let me help clarify. We're not asking for a detention basin. We're not asking for a lot of stormwater calculations. I think the simplest thing is simply some kind of dry well that accommodates the increase in the two-year bond.
Yeah, we would be definitely willing to investigate any means to, you know, remediate that additional, that additional sort of, in our opinion, de minimis change in impervious coverage. You know, it's true, it's not really clear about the stormwater management facilities that servicing this property. You know, we are, right now, under the allotment per the ordinance and the increase of the impervious coverage here is, as I've already said, is sort of a de minimis increase. So, but we're, you know, the applicant is willing to work to satisfy the requirements of the board and satisfy the requirements of the ordinance.
The fact that it's a small amount would make some kind of a combination fairly simple.
Yes.
You would agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayhew, do you have any opinion on the location? Should it be in the end of the aisle?
Yeah, it could be right there local.
I gotta, we're a little bit constrained because they're not the property owner. But I don't think that's going to be a problem so long as the applicant will agree to that improvement.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scores?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All of my questions were addressed. And thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
Board members?
I have a quick question. Can you confirm? I see the detail for a bollard, but, and I'm assuming that there's eight of them or it looks like there's about eight of them all the way around the fence, but I can't, it only points to the one in the back. So just can you confirm that they are indeed around the entire perimeter?
I believe so. Yeah, they are.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Okay, good. Okay, so we're open to the public. If anyone from the public would like to question his witness on his testimony?
David Brook, 7 Winding Way. Mr. Fraga, as the engineer for this component, have you done any other work for Coherent as an engineer?
I have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
According to the resolution, that was part of the documentation with this application, Resolution for Larkin Associates, and the application number was 98 PB 21 MJSR. It says that there is a conservation easement. Is that going to be impacted in any way?
No.
So these changes won't impact that?
No.
How about freshwater wetlands? Any impact to that?
No.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bernstein, I know we always save you for last.
I have no questions of the witness.
Okay. Thank you. Zagrodnik?
We have nothing further for the board. Thank you.
Last comments from the public as to the application.
Yep. So we got to reopen, right? Open to public for last comments on the application.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If there's anyone from the public that wants to make any final comments on this application, be free to come up. Okay, we see none?
Now motion to close.
Now motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Mr. Bernstein, direction.
Any last comments, Mr. O'Grodnik, on the application?
No, I just wanted to emphasize the one thing that I forgot to mention is that, you know, we're at about 46% impervious and at 60% that's permitted. So we're well within the requirements of the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayhew, Mr. Coys, any other conditions or issues you want to address?
I don't. I think we've touched upon everything that we had brought up. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that, then the issue is what action, if any, does the board wish to take on this application subject to the various comments in the reports of the township's professionals as well as the conditions agreed upon by applicant and its witnesses during this hearing?
In other words, does anyone make a motion to approve based on the conditions that were agreed upon?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve file 23 PB 15 SPV.
I'll second that.
Okay, any final comments from the board members? That, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Committee in the potty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're done. Thank you. It shouldn't be long. I just say that operative terms. Okay, next up is Homestead 279 LLC, file number 22-PB, dash 05 dash S backslash MSPV with time of decision of January 31st of this year. This application has been continued or rescheduled from December 14th of last year without further notice. Mr. O'Grodnik?
Good evening, members of the board. Mike O'Grodnik on behalf of the applicant from Sabo Shock Firm. This is an application that was filed in May 11th of 2022 for minor subdivision and preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of.
Okay. Mr. O'Grodnik, just a moment. I got a couple of board members that need to recuse themselves before we go further.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Chicorelli and Mr. Peason are accusing themselves. I don't know if objectors counsel is here.
Yep, he's walking in now.
You're gone. Okay, Mr. O'Grodnik.
Before Mr. O'Grodik, would objectors counsel please place his name and firm on the record, please?
Yes, certainly. John Malco, Simon Law Group on behalf of the objector, Andrew Iannella, who is present.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this is, I think this is meeting number 10 on this application we filed back in 2022. Originally, this application was for the construction of 137,413 square foot industrial building for the back portion of Block 200.02 Lot 12, also known obviously as 279 Homestead Road. Properties located on the north side of Homestead Road in the L. Light Industrial District, predominantly surrounded by industrial uses. We're here tonight on a request for a jurisdictional determination. As you recall, the original plan was for essentially what we're doing here, which is a subdivision and a lot not abutting the street variance with a perpetual easement 53-foot right away to Homestead Road. We had gone and proposed, you know, to address some of the comments to a condominium form of ownership, which is governed by statute. And there was a conclusion or a legal opinion that that change would be so substantial that this would actually be treated, that would be treated as a new application. So that was briefed extensively by objectors counsel, Mr. Bernstein's office and our office. And in light of that, we are reverting back to the original concept of, you know, your typical minor subdivision. This application that we provided by way of Concept 35 is, has some alterations from the original application. Most notably, the building has been reduced from 137,413 square feet to 105,340 square feet, a reduction of approximately 25%. The application also looks at reducing the number of shipping bays, which was comments that we received throughout these public hearings, as well as reorientation of the shipping bays away from 206 and towards the existing industrial uses that are adjacent on the east side of the proposed structure. A final alteration related to relocation of the stormwater management detention basin was made after, again, consulting with the board as well as consulting with the objector and the objectors professionals. So these are the four changes, the primary changes that are related to this application. The applicant is proposing to subdivide Lot 12, which is about a little over 17 acres into two lots, proposed Lot A, which is about 5.4 acres, would continue to front on Homestead Road and contain the existing commercial use operating for many, many years as strike a botanical. The rear 11.7 acres of Lot 12 would be subdivided off into proposed Lot B for the construction of an industrial building with access to Homestead Road, provided by way of a perpetual easement across proposed Lot A. That's also detailed in the Concept 35 that was prepared by Josh Tyner. The applicant, as we had submitted in collaboration with the seller, a certification just confirming that the applicant here is the contract purchaser of the site should these approvals be granted. They're under contract with 279 Homestead LLC to purchase just the rear portion of the lot as detailed on the site plan, the subdivision plan. There's a written contract between the parties, of course, that deals that, which has been extended numerous times in light of the protracted public hearings and is still current. Mr. Bernstein's memorandum dated this week, January 18th, confirms that a contract purchaser has standing under the MLUL as a developer. It's actually, it's codified in statute as well as case law. I filed a legal brief today just highlighting those cases and I agree with Mr. Bernstein's conclusions. The certification also confirmed the updated owner's consent for this conceptual site plan, which again incorporated those four main changes that were requested. Tonight, we're just asking the board to make a finding on jurisdiction. Because, you know, we've redesigned the site, I think, really four or five times. And there's a fair amount of work, especially with geotech, to redesign it again. So we're asking this board to retain jurisdiction. We've also extensively briefed, I would call it a secondary issue related to, as I indicated, whether changes to the site plan constitute an amended application or whether boards can consider and, you know, impose conditions, impose, you know, perhaps conditions that lessen the intensity, in this case significantly lessen the size of the building, lessen the loading bays. And I don't think we have to really get into it too much, but I will, I am prepared to review that case law with the board. And I think that the courts, especially the appellate courts, have been very consistent that that a board has the authority and the ability to continue to hear an application and make changes to it, especially where there's, again, a significant reduction in the scope and impact of the proposed improvements. Mr. Coys also has reviewed this concept and recommended, consistent with what I think is pretty well-settled case law, that this board should retain jurisdiction of this application as we redesign it for the fourth time. Should the board determine that this planning board should retain the jurisdiction of this application, then again, the applicant will fully engineer the site plan. We're going to have to read to all our outside agencies. I mean, we are on the edge of DEP approvals for this. As Mr. Cook can tell you, who's going to be your next witness. So given the scope of the engineering, specifically the geotech, we're going to need at least three or four months to get all that done with. So we're asking for, you know, again, a vote on the jurisdictional issues and then an adjournment. And of course, we'll extend time of decision. I was thinking through the end of May to start. And the only, I guess I'll allow my colleague to.
Thanks very much, Mr. O'Grady. We similarly want to vote on the issue of standing and jurisdiction. We feel that it hasn't been established. My eyebrows shoot up at the idea that this deal has been extended numerous times, and yet it's just today, shortly after noon today, that we received this proof of a contract and proof of the beneficial and legal ownership that Redcom has in the property. If, five months ago today, that Mr. Bernstein's letter with his decision and recommendation to the board that there isn't standing, I'm at a loss for why, if this contract existed, it couldn't have been produced, or at least the same certification and correspondence couldn't have been produced ten days ago, a month ago, a hundred days ago. And so it seems to me that there's additional proofs and verification that need to be provided as to the issue of standing. Even if standing is established, I think there's still the issue of creation of a landlocked lot that would be a standout from the neighborhood and the permitted uses. And I think that the different case law that's been discussed, certainly extensively by Mr. O'Grady and by Mr. Bernstein and by my predecessor in representing Mr. Iannella, Mr. Torriello, that there are substantial differences in this application from the circumstances that were presented there. Notably, none of those cases presented an issue where it would create an entirely landlocked parcel at this scale. And at this time, we would ask that the board take the vote on the issue of standing before further testimony is taken so that we can move forward on that basis.
Just a few things. So talking, you know, I also was reading Mr. Torriello's memorandum and raising my eyebrows because he relies on this idea that it's unlawful because we're requesting a variance, which, obviously, any landowner has an opportunity to request a lot not abutting a street variance. And we testified to that. And, you know, and the case law on that really talks about access and safety. So for a Section thirty-five, thirty-six variance, just because we need a variance for a lot not abutting a street doesn't mean that it's unlawful and we don't have standing. So that's an odd argument. I'll also note that Mr. Torriello argued in his July twenty-eighth memorandum on page four. And he stated, well, Red, quote, "Redcom lost its ownership interest when the application was changed to withdraw the request for the subdivision." I would submit that inverse logic dictates that according to the objector's argument, if subdivision, then standing. Therefore, we agree with the logic and the position of Mr. Torriello that we do have standing because we're back to the subdivision, which was the original application. I would also submit that the objector is judicially stopped from arguing a contrary position. When it suited them, when we were looking and exploring the condominium option, they said, nope, has to be a subdivision in order to have standing. And now they're arguing the exact opposite of that position. And that's not, that's logically flawed. And as I said earlier, as for the proposed changes, it should be fairly obvious to this board, who's incredibly experienced, that an applicant doesn't lose standing when a board, when a board asks an applicant to lessen the intensity of a proposed structure by substantially reducing the size, reducing the number of loading bays, et cetera. And I will just end on the standard that we've asserted that the central focus of the application has unchanged, that there's not substantial changes. And there's a presumption that boards, I'm going to quote Gant and Dolphy versus Town of Hamilton, which is an appellate division case relatively recently. It's 2004. Quote, "Generally, a board retains jurisdiction over an application until a decision has been rendered and an appeal filed with the law division." So this board has jurisdiction of this application. We've had forty-something hours of testimony. And just because we've reduced the size and reduced the orientation, and we don't lose that jurisdictional standing, we would argue.
It's not the thrust of our argument that the reductions in size and intensity is what constitutes the substantial change, but that the significant changes in moving from first a subdivision, then to a condominium, and again, back to a subdivision, are a substantial change. If I was to stand before you, do a double somersault and say, and land on the same spot, and then argue, I never moved, you wouldn't be very much convinced. And I think that these changes represent essentially, the proposal has been a moving target, and there have been huge changes. And it's Mr. Bernstein's own opinion in his August twenty-fifth memorandum and recommendation decision that the change from subdivision to condominium was so substantial a change that it did require a new application. So by the principle of inverse logic, the move from a condominium to, back to, a subdivision would also be so significant a change that a new application is required. And so we ask the board to, in its experience and with its discretion, make that decision.
You're up, Mr. Bernstein.
And people wonder why I keep coming back every year. I think for the purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman, we have not had forty hours of testimony. Maybe four hours of testimony, but definitely not forty hours. It may have felt like I agree with Committeeman Lapone, but this has been a stop-start. For a, there's been more legal argument and more legal briefs generated on an application than I can remember in my history in this, behalf of this board. We are back to ostensibly square one with a smaller square. I have set forth in multiple correspondence to this board various and sundry positions regarding what we've had and we don't have. I have also had a chance to review Mr. Coys's latest iteration on the plan that is now before, at least has been filed before this board. As I indicate in my last letter, I believe at the moment that this board has standing with a caveat. And it's sort of the same caveat I've had all along. It's gotten a little better, but I don't think we've gotten there just yet. And that is, yes, Mr. McNally keeps sending us love letters saying that, yes, Mr. O'Grady's client is here at his behest because he is the contract purchaser. And the latest document seems to get closer. But I think what we need, at least for the record, and I'm not suggesting that it has to be tonight, Mr. Chairman, but for the record, that Mr. O'Grady provide us a copy of the deed that his client is proposing to obtain from Mr. McNally, which I assume is part of the contract that he is, the contract he has entered into with Mr. McNally. Mr. O'Grady's on record is indicating to me, and I believe it's on Civic Clerk, that ostensibly the property being acquired is what is in the proposed application. And I have no reason necessarily to disbelieve Mr. O'Grady's comments. I still, however, think for the purposes of the record and related items that a copy of the deed or the copy of the proposed deed or acquisition setting forth exactly the meets and bounds of this to-be-acquired subdivision would be best for all concerned, the board, the applicant, the objector, et cetera. As has been stated back and forth, the board's agreeing to continue to hear this application does not in any way indicate that the board intends to approve this application, either as currently, in its current iteration or in some other iteration to come, depending upon the board's thoughts and comments over the hopeful testimony, finally, of this application that includes height, operation, et cetera. It is, however, in my opinion, based on the current situation and with the condition I have placed on it, assuming that Mr. O'Grady can produce that, which I assume he can, that this matter can move forward if the board wishes to retain. It's up to the board ultimately if it wishes to retain jurisdiction. The board could reject my advice, wouldn't be the first time, may not be the last time, and indicate that they no longer have jurisdiction and that Mr. O'Grady and his client need to go elsewhere. If Mr. Iannella, if the objector is not happy with the ultimate board decision, there are options available for them as well in the short term and/or in the long term. But I believe at the moment, based on what we have before us, with the condition I have indicated, that this board can continue to retain jurisdiction of this application at the present time. That does not, however, preclude the board from determining, depending upon this application itself, whether or not it ultimately does have standing.
Thank you. Mr. Coys, any additional words or comments?
I have nothing additional. I stand by the memo that I gave to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. May, I don't want you to feel left out. I just can't imagine what you might have to comment on.
Mr. Mayu, I will indicate to the board, to save Mr. Mayu from having to speak, has not commented on the application because he would advise that there was no escrow for him to comment on the application. So it was basically Mr. Coys and myself dealing with this issue. I'm sure Mr. Mayu will have other comments to make on this application as it goes forward again.
Okay. Board members, thoughts, comments?
I would indicate, before board members speak, that our newest member of the board, unless he's going to state that he has reviewed all of the, should not be voting nor participating in this discussion. He can sit up there for the time being, for the moment. But just for, as he is well aware from a prior life, having been on the board, you might as well just sit for the moment, for the prior board.
He's a bystander.
The eligible members are Mr. Scovio, Mr. Lapone, yourself, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, and Ms. Smith for the purposes of this discussion and a vote.
Okay. I mean, essentially, I do concur with the Missouri, and I call it the Missouri doctrine by Mr. Bernstein, as in show me, in the show me state, you know, that we would want to see something if we decide...
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that. I mean, if you look at, you know, again, usually you do deeds as part of resolution compliance right before you file the final plans. So we're going to have to get a surveyor to confirm it. But yeah, it's exactly what's in Concept Thirty-five, which is, I think, almost to the, you know, to the exact number what was in the original application. It's eleven-point-seven acres for the rear lot carve-out and then the existing Lot A to remain at the five-point-four acres, which is exactly consistent with the initial application almost two years ago.
Okay. Scovio?
I would make one last point, Mr. Chairman, before the board, and this was raised by Objectors Counsel. I want the public to understand, and I believe the board does already understand, that the issue of the infamous flag lot and the easement and access to the back of the property is still an issue, that the board will review as part of the overall application. And if the board determines that this application has standing, the board has not made a determination on the overall application itself, including that aspect.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the forty hours of testimony aside that we've all put in here, I'm dis, I'm a little concerned, not disturbed, but disappointed that we are still dealing with all these issues. And I want to get forward through an application so we can see it too, its fruition. So I would like to make sure in plenty of time that all the necessary documents that we're asking for are submitted so that only us, our professionals, and our esteemed colleagues across the aisle there have a chance to read it. And I'm not saying ten days in advance, but I think the standing letter that we're asking for, the deed, I would like to see that a little before that. I think if we can have it within thirty days so that that puts to bed that conversation and we can move forward with the rest of the application, I would appreciate it. And if that's agreeable, I would allow that, that we would have standing and allow an adjournment to a date to be determined later.
Okay. Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any final thoughts, comments, before I ask for a vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scovio.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Chair Serrati.
Yes.
Mr. O'Grady, let's talk about timing. When is your client proposing to have the material separate and apart from the deed issue before this board in sufficient time for everyone to review it, not only the board, the board professionals, but objector and objectors professionals?
I was told by the engineering team that the earliest would be May.
So are you proposing to grant an extinction on this application to May thirty-first?
Yes, sir.
And to be placed on the second May agenda?
I would pencil that in with a light pencil.
Well, I think we need to set a date down so we don't have to go through further notice so that new counsel is, Mr. Malkow is at least aware of when he's supposed to be here again.
And I will certainly give him an email and keep him updated as we progress through the engineering.
What's that date, Mr. Coys? The second meeting in May?
May ninth.
May ninth, okay. All right, so this is, this is a motion, Mr. Chairman, for the extinction of time to the decision on this application to May thirty-first, 2024, and for the scheduling of this hearing at May ninth, 2024, at seven PM or soon thereafter as the matter is heard. Mr. O'Grady, I don't know if you've been here since the start of the year. I can't recall, it's sort of melded lately. The board is intending to not, with the one exception for next week, it does not intend to be hearing warehouse application, a warehouse application as the only item on the agenda. So you will be sharing the agenda, possibly with another one of your applications, but you'll be sharing an agenda.
A motion to pay the planning board members some type of stipend per year.
You'll have to ask the legislation to change the law. That's the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. Without further notice?
Without further notice.
Okay. Do we have a motion to extend this application?
I'll make that...
Well, that was for standing. Now...
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. So we have a second. Final comment.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Thank you, Mr. Radowitz.
Yep. Okay, roll call, please. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz. Commit him in the potty.
Yes.
Chair, sir Roger.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest we take a recess for multiple reasons, including finding our two missing members? And sending Mr. Deb home unless he wants to sit here, listen?
Okay.
And Mr. Radowitz is recusing on Homestead Road LLC. To prison center.
Okay, so it's just about?
8:40.
8:40 according to the big clock.
So it's 8:40 on this clock?
Yeah, it's 8:20. It says 8:30 there, so we're going to give it 10 minutes, 8:40 on the clock on the dais.
8:40 on the Mickey Mouse clock, okay.
Okay, everyone, we're back in session. So next up.
All right, Mr. Chairman, a couple of procedural items before Mr. Giannetti introduces himself, as well as Objectors Council, our objectors. Again, for purpose of the record, Mr. Radowitz has recused himself. Mr. Dove is here, he is listening, but he cannot participate until such time as he decides he wants to sit and listen to the 40 hours of testimony. Mr. Pearson, Vice Chair Pearson and Deputy Mayor Chigarelli are back on the dais. Their recusal from the last application does not apply here. I do have a couple of questions of Mr. Giannetti, but I want to get appearances on the record, Mr. Chairman.
First, I'm just going to announce who we, or what we have in front of us, which is Homestead Road LLC filed 21-PB-25-MS, backslash MSPV with the time of decision of February 29th of this year. This application is continued from our last meeting on January 11th of this year, without further notice.
David.
I may ask you if someone had a question, if there's something up front.
I will get there.
Yeah, David.
You're asking to see the report? Okay.
So Giannetti?
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Giannetti of the Law Firm, Dave Pitney on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC.
Okay, objectors?
Good evening, Mike Passaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute.
Is it on, Mike?
I think so. Yep, sorry. Mike Passaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute.
Brian Tarantino, representing SWAT. And just to, just to correct something that Mr. Giannetti said last time, I've been an objector since September of 2022, which was a number of months prior to Mr. Giannetti being the council.
John Lathan, objector number four.
Lucy Sandler, objector number five, representing the Sarlin Conservancy.
Scott Gross, objector number two.
Mr. Chairman, one procedural item and then a couple of questions from Mr. Giannetti before he starts his latest. I would indicate that I have received a certification by absent board member examination of record slash eligibility to vote, a signed certification from Ms. Smith. She reviewed the video of January 11th, 2024 board meeting. Therefore, she is eligible to participate in this evening's application and going forward. Mr. Coys, take it before I take it home. Item number two, for the purposes of the record, I don't know if people have noticed on Civic Clerk or not, I did receive this past week from Mr. Giannetti that I sent to Mr. Coys on Monday, a copy of a civil action consent order entered by Judge Sue in regard to enhanced acquisitions LLC versus John and Linda Shockley, which relates to issues that were raised at previous meetings by members of the public regarding same. I thank Mr. Giannetti for providing me with that information. However, it opened up another couple of questions that I'm asking, hopefully for an answer, not tonight, but an answer nonetheless, hopefully before your next appearance on the 8th of February. All of the material that has been filed with the planning board through the planning department in applications and the like discusses the concept that the applicant is Homestead Road LLC. This is obviously enhanced acquisitions is nowhere in any of the applications. Now, I know you've indicated, at least on the record, that they are somehow one in the same. I would appreciate for the board's purposes, and I suspect possibly for one or more of the objectors, those who have a license to practice law and those who wish they had a license to practice law, would like to understand the affiliation or coordination, et cetera, between the two parties so we can try to close that loop. And as I said, I do not suggest you answer that. I simply suggest if you can provide it to me in advance of the February 8th, get it to my office, we will then provide it to Mr. Coys and to Civic and to the objectors and go from there. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. So good evening again, chairmen, members of the board. Again, Craig Giannetti of the Law Firm, Dave Pitney on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC. I know we have some new board members that weren't at the last application we just heard, but I assure you, if I tried to do a front double somersault, I wouldn't land in the same spot. So this is a continued application for preliminary and final major site plan approval, as well as minor subdivision approval for a lot line adjustment involving property located at 189 and 203 Homestead Road, Block 200.10, lots 32 and 33, property being located in the T E C D Transitional Economic Development District, at least at the time of the application. And the application is proposing, in addition to the minor subdivision, you know, the site plan for the two proposed warehouses, warehouse number one, approximately 369,000 square feet, and warehouse number two, approximately 168,000 square feet. At the last meeting, we completed the testimony of our traffic expert, both direct presentation and cross-examination, questioning from the board. At prior meetings, there is a opinion given by board professionals as to the town's stream corridor ordinance and the applicability. We also discussed the wetlands permits that were issued and were submitted. So at this point, we have with us here tonight Ed Cook, who was involved in the wetlands process, and will be talking about the man-made ditch on Lot 33 that is a subject of that stream corridor ordinance. Mr. Cook is with Eastern States Environmental Associates, Inc., and at this time, I'd like to have him sworn in.
How do I know if my mic is on?
Should be green.
It is red.
You're in trouble.
I talk loud.
I'll fix it. I'm not qualified to fix it, but I will fix it.
Let's see, green.
I could use Craig, you probably care to listen to a Bugs and Bunnies guy more than a lawyer, anyway. Anyway, sorry.
Someone's going to swear you in. Oh, you did?
You weren't paying attention?
Sorry, I maybe didn't hear you through the mic.
Name is Edward, last name Cook, spelled K-U-C.
And Mr. Cook, could you please state your experience, qualifications, and licenses in the field of NJDEP wetland delineation and permitting?
Sure thing. For the board that doesn't know me, I serve as a principally ecologist for Eastern States Environmental Associates for the last 34 years, where I am responsible for conducting and overseeing the ecological resource inventories and evaluations that we do pertaining to natural habitats, wildlife, threatened endangered species, jurisdictional wetlands. Also serves chief, the chief representative of our clientele, both public and private, including Hillsborough Township, on various state and federal environmental-related permits. Probably about 75% of my work these days pertains to wetlands and flood hazard areas in the state of New Jersey. Prior to joining Eastern States Environmental Associates, I served as an environmental specialist for the New Jersey DEP Division of Fish Game and Wildlife, where I was responsible for the various research and management programs that the division did, responsible for trout stream classifications throughout the state. Also was responsible for providing input to the wetland resource value classification criteria for the then-proposed New Jersey Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act. I also served in the New Jersey DEP Stakeholders Committee, responsible for developing and reviewing revisions to the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act in New Jersey.
And, well, I guess at this point, I'd ask Mr. Cook be accepted as an expert in the field of environmental permitting, particularly with wetlands and flood hazard area permits?
Any objections? Heads shaking, no, so we accept, please continue.
And I guess, you know, Mr. Cook, in addition to your, obviously, your expertise, how about particularly in the town of Hillsborough, your experience with, you know, wetlands delineations and permitting and flood hazard area permitting?
In Hillsborough Township, throughout the years, I have represented and at present represent many applications for, to the New Jersey DEP for wetlands letters of interpretation, general permits, wetland transitionary waivers, and flood hazard area verifications and permits.
And so as part of this, obviously, you work regularly with NJDEP on these wetland applications and flood hazard area permits?
Just about on an everyday basis.
And as part of this application, you were asked to review and analyze NJDEP wetland regulations?
That's correct.
And speaking of those regulations, you have a role in actually preparing those regulations?
Yes, as I said earlier, during my time with the New Jersey DEP Division of Fish Game and Wildlife, I was responsible for providing input to the then-proposed Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act with regard to wetland resource value classification criteria. And as I also said, I was also involved with the New Jersey DEP Stakeholders Committee that was responsible for developing and reviewing different revisions to the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act.
And can you please state for the board what your role was with the applicant in the wetlands permitting process?
Sure, I was retained to review the project and to represent, make recommendations to the proposed project with regard to jurisdictional wetlands compliance, and then to represent the proposed project to the New Jersey DEP for the relevant wetlands permits that were required.
And in that role, what did you do in preparation for an investigation?
Well, first of all, I reviewed all the documentations that had previously been submitted to the DEP. The wetlands letter of interpretation application was not submitted by myself. It was actually submitted by Van Cleef Engineering, the project engineer, and you're walking over to me. Okay, good deal. I didn't like that look. Concerning me. So I reviewed all the wetland surveys, the wetlands mapping, and so on and so forth. Also conducted multiple field inspections to, you know, personally see the jurisdictional wetlands and wetlands limits and the characteristics of those wetlands that were being represented to the DEP.
And so you're familiar with the various wetland features on the property?
I am very familiar with the wetlands features on the property, yes.
And the DEP, in fact, actually issued a wetlands letter of interpretation dated May 25th, 2023?
That they did, yes, that's correct.
I guess for purpose of tonight's testimony, I'd like to focus on the man-made drainage ditch on Lot 33.
I'm objecting, there's been no testimony regarding man-made or not on the ditches.
I believe Mr. Ford testified previously that this was a man-made ditch, but we can get that elicited out through Mr. Cook. I guess, Mr. Cook, the ditch on Lot 33, if you could please, you know, describe the board, you know, that ditch, and you're familiar hourly with it.
Sure thing. The subject ditch that seems to be the question here is a man-made feature on Lot 33, is approximately 400 feet in length, narrow, man-made. The origin of that ditch is from multiple inlets throughout the existing property and the...
When you say inlets on the existing property, what do you mean by inlets?
Before he even gets, the word, the phrase "man-made" has been thrown around even during the witness's testimony. He needs to set a foundation as to how he came to the conclusion it's man-made, because unless he dug it himself, he had to have acquired that information from somebody else. So why don't we at least try to put it on the foundation, on the record, Mr. Giannetti?
Sure. The characteristics of that feature are very linear, very defined banks to it. It's a feature that doesn't show up as a stream or any kind of water feature on any kind of aerials or other maps. The inlets that are throughout Lot 33, which are actually inlets that receive stormwater from the impervious surfaces that come from the vehicle storage throughout there, that water goes into those inlets and is discharged at the origin of this ditch. This ditch then conveys those, that stormwater straight out in a northerly direction to Royce Brook. That particular ditch, again, linear, narrow, consists 100% of alien invasive vegetation mugwort. That ditch was not designed for water quality. That ditch does not look like it's designed for anything but stormwater conveyance from the outfall from the inlets that had untreated stormwaters from the vehicle storage area.
And was there any consultation with the property owners with respect to the ditch or in the features on the property?
Yes, Mr. Shockley had indicated that that indeed was a man-made ditch.
And was this ditch included as part of the LOI application?
Again, for the record, I did not deal with the, I did not perform the actual delineation, and I did not submit the LOI application. In the original LOI application, this ditch was not represented as a jurisdictional wetland.
And then how did it become part of, or how did that drainage ditch become part and include as part of the wetland application?
Well, pursuant to DEP's review of a wetlands LOI, they, they performed field inspections. So they actually performed multiple field inspections on this particular property. And those field inspections are to verify the proposed limits of jurisdictional wetlands, to determine if there's any areas that should be expanded, and to get an idea as far as what the resource value classification could be. Per those DEP field inspections, it was requested by the DEP to add this ditch as a jurisdictional wetland area.
And so the DEP, it was at the DEP's request that this ditch be included in the wetlands application?
Just to be clear.
Or delineated?
The wetlands application, what was submitted with the wetlands application did not include this ditch as a flagged or jurisdictional feature. Per DEP's field inspections, the DEP requested that this particular ditch be added and included as a jurisdictional wetland.
And why was it required to be included?
Well, with regard to jurisdictional wetlands, before you even get into the issue on, is it a ditch? Is it not a ditch, what the classifications are? Basically, one looks at, does it satisfy the criteria to be considered as a jurisdictional wetland, regardless of what it looks like, regardless of what it's shaped, regardless of what its function? Jurisdictional wetlands are areas that satisfy vegetation, soils, and hydrology criteria. So therefore, based upon DEP field inspection, it was determined that this feature does satisfy, it does include hydrophytic vegetation, it did have hydroic soils, and it obviously had hydrology. So therefore, the DEP required this to be considered as a jurisdictional wetland area under the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act.
And the LOI that was issued by the DEP on May 25th, 2023, included the drainage ditch?
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
And how was it classified in that letter of interpretation from the DEP?
The DEP classified this feature as an ordinary resource value wetland area.
And so then as part of that LOI, it's classified, it was considered a regulated wetland by the DEP? If you could just explain how so?
Correct. As I said, first and foremost, before you even get into the classifications in the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act, first it has to be determined, is it a jurisdictional wetland? If it's an area, regardless of what it looks like, if it satisfies a vegetation, soils, and hydrology criteria, it's a wetland area. It's a wetland area regulated by the New Jersey DEP Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act. Beyond, once it's established that is a jurisdictional wetland area, then we get into the resource value classifications. And the resource value classifications are, you know, determine what kind of buffer zone or wetland transition area is going to be required. The DEP had determined that this particular feature satisfied the criteria of an ordinary resource value wetland area.
Now, are there other types of ditches or other ditches that are not regulated by the DEP or not identified as wetlands?
Yes, we can have, this particular feature, this particular ditch so happened to satisfy vegetation, soils, and hydrology criteria. We can have ditches that don't satisfy all of those criteria, and therefore, they would not be considered as a jurisdictional wetland area. This particular feature did satisfy all of those criteria, so therefore, the DEP considered it as a jurisdictional wetland.
So not all ditches are wetlands? It all depends on the features of that ditch of whether it's considered a wetland or not?
That's correct.
And did the applicant apply to the DEP for a, let me take a step back. As part of the DEP regulations, are applicants or property owners allowed to apply for a general permit to fill wetlands?
Yes, they are. There is the Freshwater Wetlands General Permit System that allows... Yes, they are. There is the Freshwater Wetlands General Permit System that allows for authorization to disturb certain types of wetlands for certain different purposes, so to say.
And did the applicant apply for a general wetlands permit to fill this particular ditch?
Actually, we applied for multiple freshwater wetlands general permits. One of those such permits was a freshwater wetlands general permit number seven, which pertains to ordinary resource value ditches. Part of our application package included application for freshwater wetlands, or commonly called a GP-7.
And are these general permits generally issued as a matter of course, meaning if you satisfy certain items, they're issued? There's really not kind of a discretionary aspect to it?
Sure. The general wetlands permits are basically called stipulation permits. You satisfy the stipulations of those particular permits, you get the permit. Actually, when we made the regs, these permits were made to be reviewed and issued in a half hour. Not years, as we have it right now, as Mr. Mahew will attest to. But only a statewide general, or they used to be called statewide general wetlands permits, now they're called freshwater general permits, only a GP-10B, which is a long roadway crossing, requires an alternative analysis. None of the other general permits require an alternative analysis.
And then there's separate individual wetland permits that applicants can seek that are more involved?
Correct. If a project is proposing disturbance that's not covered by a general wetlands permit, they have the opportunity to apply for an individual wetlands permit. Individual wetlands permits are extremely difficult to get. They require an alternative analysis and the proof that if they are not being issued, that one is being denied a reasonable constitutional right to their property. Very difficult to get.
Now, in this case, if the applicant did not seek this general permit to fill these wetlands and just filled it on its own, would it be in violation of the DEP regulations?
Yes, it would. Since it is considered as a jurisdictional wetland, in order to disturb it or its wetland buffer zone, one has to get the appropriate permit through the DEP. If you disturb a jurisdictional area without a permit, that's considered as a violation, and the notice of violation would be issued.
And I know, I think you indicated the man-made drainage ditch was classified as an ordinary resource value. I don't know if, did you identify the zero-foot buffer?
I might have mentioned it, but I'll mention it again. An ordinary resource value wetland area does not require a buffer zone.
So what does it mean, ordinary resource value, zero-foot buffer, compared to other resource values?
This was my bag with regard to the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act. Jurisdictional wetlands are classified or are separated into three different classifications. That's it, three. The first is exceptional resource value. Exceptional resource value wetlands are wetlands that drain into a trout production water, or documented habitat for wetland-dependent rare, threatened, or endangered species. That's exceptional resource value. Those such wetlands require 150-foot wetland transition area. The other end of the spectrum are ordinary resource value wetlands. Ordinary resource value wetlands are those wetlands that have been determined, have negligible, if any, ecological resource associated with it. Examples of ordinary resource value wetlands are isolated wetlands, less than 5,000 square feet, and surrounded by greater than 50% development, drainage ditches, drainage swales, and man-made stormwater detention basins and retention basins. Those are ordinary resource value. Ordinary resource value wetlands require no wetland transition area. Everything that's not exceptional resource value or ordinary resource value is considered as intermediate resource value, which is what the remainder of the wetlands on this property were classified as. Intermediate resource value wetlands require a standard 50-foot buffer zone.
Now, you mentioned the exceptional resource values have 150-foot buffer, similar to, actually, the Town's Stream Corridor Ordinance also requires a 150-foot buffer, and then the intermediary has a 50-foot buffer. What are the reasons for having these buffers with these types of wetlands?
Well, it was determined based upon the criticalness, if that's a word, and importance of that particular wetland resource, okay? If a particular wetland was determined to have a high critical value, such as a wetland that drains into a trout production stream, or has documented occurrence of rare, threatened, and endangered species, that is one of our highest priority wetlands in the state, okay? That should therefore require the highest buffer zone, which is 150 feet. Now, mind you, during the inception of the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act, we went back and forth for a very long time on what buffer zone distances would be, how we could reduce those buffer zones, could we have different resource value classifications along the same wetland line? Those were all things that were ironed out during the inception of the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act.
And are there any other critical functions that these exceptional intermediary resource values provide, that we just discussed?
Yeah, I mean, from a Bugs and Bunnies guy's standpoint, and Mr. Coys will laugh at that, of course, if there's a wetland area that has an influence on a high-quality water, such as a trout production water, or has the ability to serve as a habitat for rare, threatened, endangered species, then that indeed has a high value and should have the highest buffer, okay? When you get down to the ordinary resource value wetlands, it was understandable at that particular time, when the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act was created, that there would be features and there would be areas that would indeed satisfy vegetation, soils, and hydrology criteria. But what was their function? Did they have a function? You know, did they serve, did they serve a higher function that deserved more protection? The resource value classifications also determine what permits are applicable to those particular wetlands. For instance, if it's not an ordinary resource value wetland area, and it's not an isolated wetland area, we can't get a general permit just to fill a wetland area for general development. You fill a wetland, a general permit for a roadway crossing, utility line crossing, things like that. But if it's not an ordinary resource value wetland area, GP-7 does not apply.
And in your opinion, does this man-made drainage ditch perform any of those critical functions for the exceptional intermediary resource values?
No. Again, this subject ditch serves to convey untreated stormwater in a linear fashion from a developed portion of the property in a direct manner, right down to Royce Brook with zero treatment.
And as part of this new development, there's going to be a new stormwater management system in compliance with DEP regulations proposed to handle stormwater management on the site?
That is correct. As part of the flood hazard area individual permits, the DEP with literally, in my opinion, the most comprehensive and most strict stormwater management regulations in the country, this project had to develop a stormwater management plan to be represented to the DEP, and the DEP approved that plan.
And that permit was issued on November 6, 2023?
November 6, 2023. And what was issued there, there were joint permits that were applied for, both wetlands permits and flood hazard area permits. Flood hazard, because we have two regulations, Flood Hazard Area Control Act rules, which regulates streams, flood hazard areas, and riparian zones, and we have the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act that regulates areas that satisfy the three criteria for jurisdictional wetlands. Yes, on November the 6th, 2023, the FHA individual permits were issued, and also attached to that was the FHA verification, which verified the limits of all regulated waters and assigned the riparian zone associated with those regulated waters.
So that kind of answered my next question, that the flood hazard area rules and those permits deal with the regulation, in part, they deal with the regulation of streams by the DEP?
That's correct. The Flood Hazard Area Control Act rules regulate jurisdictional waters and riparian zones and flood hazard areas.
And did the NJDEP require anything from a flood hazard area perspective with respect to this drainage ditch?
No. In accordance with the flood hazard area verification, this drainage ditch was not considered as a regulated water. It does not have a flood plain, and it does not have a riparian zone associated with it.
So the DEP did not consider this drainage ditch to be a stream or part of a stream corridor that would acquire a flood hazard area permit?
That's correct.
Now, you're aware, and some of our correspondence back and forth with the board professionals, that they're the opinion that this man-made drainage ditch is a stream under the Town's Stream Corridor Protection Ordinance and claims 150-foot buffer is required on either side. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Now, the Town's Land Development Ordinance defines stream as the following, and this is Section 188-3 of the ordinance, "A water course having a source and terminus, banks, and channel through which water flows at least periodically." You're familiar with that definition?
I've been made aware of it, yes.
And what is your opinion as to that definition?
Well, being entirely respectful, that has to be one of the vaguest definitions that I've come across with regard to description of a regulated water. First of all, it's extremely vague as to what it relates to. However, I think in that, one of the things that I would pick out is, I think, a key word in that definition, perhaps the author of that definition meant this, I think one of the key words in that definition is what's used when they say "water course." Generally, a water course is a natural water feature that has a resource associated with it. It's not just a feature created to convey stormwater.
And kind of going along with the board professionals and the objectors' interpretations, would that mean any drainage ditch or swell in Hillsborough would acquire 150-foot buffer, including a roadside ditch or a roadside swell?
Using the vague definition, most certainly. Any roadside ditch would have a source, a terminus, banks, and a channel.
But again, the NJDEP did not consider this a stream under the FHA rules, didn't require any sort of buffer, designated it as an ordinary resource value wetland with a zero-foot buffer that the applicant's allowed to fill with a general permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Referring back again to the Town's Stream Corridor Ordinance, this is at Section 188-64, capital D, subparaphrase, little e, you know, states that the Stream Corridor Protection Ordinance is not intended to conflict with any applicable regulations from the NJDEP, which shall govern. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In your opinion, based upon the NJDEP regulations...
Okay, I'm going to object on this question.
All I said is based on your opinion. All I said is based on your opinion.
Mr. Cook is not an attorney. He didn't, I'm assuming, did not write this ordinance, given his current testimony. And I'll go back to my original objection back in December. Mr. Cook, and I've given latitude here, but none of, I think 95% of what has been testified at this point is anywhere in a report, anywhere in anything that Mr. Cook has submitted.
I would say, A, all I stated was based upon your opinion. I didn't even ask a question. Second, I'm not asking for a legal conclusion. I'm not asking whether, in his opinion, there's any sort of usurpation of the law occurring, asking any legal opinion, just based upon how the DEP permits, whether he believes it conflicts with the Town's ordinance. Now, ask, it's not a legal conclusion.
I would disagree.
I'm not done yet. Second, in response to the back and forth, the letters back and forth to Mr. Bernstein back in September, I included a letter from Mr. Cook that outlined a lot of this. He didn't, he's not saying word for word everything in the letter, but the subject matter of what was in that letter, he's testified to tonight. And the permits that were issued by the DEP and the regulations speak for themselves.
I would disagree. There is nothing, I believe, in any of his reports about man-made discussions with Mr. Shockley or...
He doesn't have to put that in a report. He was giving his analysis and his conclusions. He's now providing the foundation for it, as well as the rest of his testimony. Just like when our planner comes, she's not only going to be limited to word for word every single thing in her report.
I reiterate my objection. I disagree with you, so that's...
Kelly's asked a question, so we know what the question is.
Continue.
Mr. Cook, in your opinion, based upon the NJDP regulation and the permits issued to the applicant thereunder, do you believe it conflicts with the Stream Corridor Protection Ordinance conflicts with the same, or applying it conflicts with the same?
As I answered that, if I could, for the record, read in what that section of the regulation basically states, it's in a purpose and scope of the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act, NJAC 7:7A 1.1, subtitle C, that indicates that the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act on subsequent to July 1, 1988, shall supersede any law or ordinance enacted by any municipality, county, or political subdivision thereof regulating freshwater wetlands or freshwater wetland transition areas, except the Pinelands. No municipality, county, or political subdivision thereof shall enact any law, ordinance, rule, or regulation requiring a transition area adjacent to a freshwater wetland, except that the Pinelands Commission may provide a more stringent. With that, since this ditch was considered by the DEP to be a regulated wetland area without a buffer zone, since it is a regulated wetland area, it would be my opinion that we have some conflict with a municipal ordinance applying a buffer zone to a state regulated wetland area.
From an environmental perspective, is there any reason, in your opinion, that there should be 150-foot buffer on either side of this man-made ditch?
Again, I'm going to reiterate my objection. There is nothing in his report talking about resource, excuse me, sorry. There is nothing in his report to which it bases for any discussion on ecological value, water quality values, or anything. It's not there. And if I'm wrong, I apologize, but it's not there. This is an expert giving an opinion. There's been no report on this. There has been no discussion of it, and so I object.
And I mean, first, again, I would note, our prior September correspondence included the letter of Mr. Cook addressing a lot of this. Second, he's also pining based upon the freshwater wetlands permit that was issued. I mean, those documents also speak for themselves. I mean, let's not forget, the NJDEP, Department of Environmental Protection, that is the role of the DEP, protect the environment. Zero-foot buffer, ordinary resource value, no flood hazard area permit required, not considered a stream. He's allowed, that's part of what Mr. Cook does, is apply for these permits, interpret these permits, and I'm asking, in his opinion, whether he believes, from an environmental perspective, whether there's a need to have 150-foot buffer with respect to this man-made ditch. I think you should answer it, and I would think the board would want to hear it.
Again, I'll just repeat my objection. There's nothing...
And it's found, where in that letter is there a discussion about the 150-foot buffer?
Well, it's his opinion, and it's not required.
But is this the first time he's offering that opinion on a 150, or is there something in that letter or report that he provided?
Well, no, because the opinion is, there was no, there is no 150-foot buffer required, and there's a reason why there's not 150-foot buffer required.
The question is, while he, that may be his opinion, wherein any correspondence has he indicated to the board how he came to that conclusion, other than his testimony here this evening?
His opinion was whether or not the ditch was within the wetlands jurisdiction. It's not opining upon buffers and whether or not it applies in this particular case. And that's the issue that was briefed back in the fall, was whether or not this ditch comes under the stream corridor ordinance, or whether it doesn't. Has nothing to do with the buffers, because if it falls within the ordinance, then the 150-foot buffer applies.
If I recall.
If I recall, the board tabled that decision towards the end.
That part is a board decision. The issue is not what the board did or didn't do. The issue is whether or not we've been provided with any of this in a written form, other than testimonial, which Mr. Giannetti is allowed to ask, but understand that it will probably open up to more issues than it will less.
Yeah.
What the board agreed to deal with was a request made that the board deemed the application denied because the stream corridor would therefore prevent at least one of the proposed buildings from being built, and the board determined that it was not going to make that decision in the abstract and was going to deal with it as part of the overall application. That hasn't changed any.
I mean, the issue is really, are these things that he's testified to in his report or in a letter? And he said a lot, right? He talked about the DEP field notes, he talked about conversations with Mr. Shockley, he talked about, you know...
He doesn't have to provide that in a report. He identified it as a man-made ditch. And you're allowed to ask him questions?
There was no, Mr. Giannetti, I know it's fun to talk over people. We tend to do it as lawyers and each other, but Mr. Tarantino, who has been quiet this evening, get his two words in.
That's really the issue. The issue is, Mr. Cook has said many things, and the public and we as objectors have not had an opportunity to vet that information, you know, to say, is this, you know, his definition of what a man-made stream is, because it's linear, and, you know, the field notes that he's referring to, and the conversations that he's talking about, there's no documentation whatsoever of any of that information. So he's just talking about it, but we don't have, why have a report if it's not required to be in it?
He's an expert, and he's allowed to testify it. He's identified as a man-made ditch in the letter. He doesn't have to identify every single reason why, he's testifying to it. You want to vet it, vet it. He's here. You can also bring your own expert and have him submit a report, and then we'll have an opportunity to cross-examine it. But the board has every right to hear from the expert who's issued two reports in this application.
So you're saying he's going to revise his report to include the rationale that he's just presented in his verbal testimony? Is that what he's going to do?
What rationale was all part of his rationale and his conclusions in the letter? He's allowed to expand upon that.
He talked about field notes, he talked about criteria for what is man-made. None of that is in his report. So he's allowed to just say whatever he, you know, to testify to whatever?
He's an expert, yes, he can.
I'm more interested in understanding the contradiction, or whatever, wants to state that the township's ordinance isn't applicable here. I'm not sure there was anything in a...
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I take a couple of minutes? I want to speak to Mr. Mayhew, and we can come back to this. Two minutes.
You want two minutes? I'll give you three. What time are we at? 9:30, so...
Me too.
All right. No one leaves the room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we're back.
I had a question of Mr. Mayhew. He answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. I would also like to highlight, as part of the DEP application process, Mr. Cook, in his office, prepared several reports that were included in part of the application process. All that was submitted to this board or on Civic Clerk. So they have the opportunity to review everything with respect to the wetlands, the flood hazard area, and how the conclusions came to what they be. Doesn't have to have, every single word he's saying here tonight has to be found somewhere in a report. He's giving his expert opinion. And I only have...
He's giving his expert opinion, Mr. Giannetti, as to his interpretation. His conversations with Mr. Shockley are not expert opinions. His field notes and the absence of everyone else seeing them are not expert opinions. He can give an expert opinion on his interpretation of the process, but...
And put him rely on, and any expert's allowed to rely on conversation.
He can rely on, but it's the understanding that it's either hearsay or questionable foundation. I'm not saying he can't rely on it. I'm just pointing out to you that making, being an expert doesn't allow you to, in and of itself, talk to people and then therefore define it as an expert opinion.
I don't think he's defining...
He defined in his testimony that having talked to Mr. Shockley, it is not, it is a man-made ditch. That may be what he has, but understand, in the absence of Mr. Shockley or anything in writing, it's hearsay testimony in the traditional sense of the word, as you and I both know it.
True, but in the traditional, under court rules, and experts are allowed to rely on discussions, and it wasn't just the discussions, he described the features of it.
The answer is reliance is one thing. Determining it as an expert opinion is another. He can give an expert opinion on his interpretation of the application of the DEP regulations to the situation at hand. His interpretation of other potentially legal issues is ultimately up to the board to decide whether or not it wants to give it weight or not. But merely being an expert doesn't allow you necessarily to opine, that everything you opine on is necessarily, therefore, based because I am an expert. He's an expert on a limited issue, and he's opining on the limited issue, correct? He's opining on the impact of the DEP regulations related to this application.
And the permits issued.
And the permits issued. So let's try to... If objectors have their issues, they can raise the issues on cross-examination and/or make requests of additional information from the individual on cross-examination. Because I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Giannetti, Mr. Cook is not planning on supplementing his report?
No, unless, I mean, it's all in the, the letter, the reports, and the DEP reports submitted, or the...
He's not planning on supplementing.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I guess, one last question. Given your extensive experience in Hillsborough Township, including work that you have done for Hillsborough, have you ever seen the township apply the stream corridor protection ordinance to a man-made ditch, man-made drainage ditch?
I'm allowed to answer that?
Yes.
I think, before he answers it, he needs to qualify exactly where and when he came up with those opinions on behalf of the township, because he's now being asked, and all the time he's done work for the township. If you want to change the question, you can change the question, but the implication is that, having done work for the township, he has given opinions regarding same. If he has, when, where, and how. If he hasn't, he can comment on his interpretation.
So, yeah, again, I'm not asking opinions he gave, or expert opinions he gave, on behalf of the township. I'm asking his experience in dealing with the township and dealing with the ordinance, has he ever seen it applied by the township? That's a factual question.
We're going to, he cannot make that comment in the abstract. There's got to be specific times, dates, and places where he has either seen it by his own involvement, and/or he's been provided it by the township, and oh, by the way, irrespective, it doesn't necessarily bind this board.
So can you give any examples where it hasn't been applied?
Sure. The two, the two most recent ones, one was the application represented for Hillsborough Township for the Brown Avenue extension.
Isn't that the same question?
He's now going to testify on his experience when it wasn't applied? How is that not the same as when it was applied?
We're back to the same, we're back to the same issue. Your client is now being, your witness is now being asked, which, by the way, raises a whole nother question as to whether or not he can, in fact, testify before this board, because now he's going to give testimony related to experience he may have. Let me go back a step. Have you ever represented, done any work for the township of Hillsborough?
I've represented permits for the town of Hillsborough.
Related to items of this nature?
Related to wetlands permits, correct.
When was the last one you did?
It was the Brown Avenue extension. Actually, Hillsborough Township was not the formal client. The engineer, Reynolds Engineering Group, was the client. I was the consultant involved with dealing with the DEP for the Brown Avenue extension and the freshwater wetlands permits that we got for that.
Which was?
Statewide general wetlands permit number 10B.
When?
I don't have that date, but I can get that from you.
Recent, I believe.
Yes, yeah. The other one, Apex Sports, Mountain View Park, that was actually a GP7, which we had multiple ditches coming through the property that we had to fill under GP7s.
On behalf of whom?
On behalf of Apex Sports.
Right, so that was in it. Let's deal more with the Brown Avenue extension issue. Apex, you were representing a private client, and whether or not the board, or the township, et cetera, dealt with that issue is not necessarily germane to this application, but you did, however, apparently do work for the township, is that correct?
For Brown Avenue, it was, the town was the beneficiary of the permit that was secured. The town was not my client for this. The engineering group was the client. The township of Hillsborough was not my client.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to want a few minutes with members of the township who happen to be sitting on this board to get a better understanding, because I'm not totally sure I concur with that consideration, but if the board would allow me a few minutes with Mr. Ciccarelli and Mr. Lepani?
Certainly. We're back in session.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of the record, I asked to speak to Committeeman Lepani, who before his current position was the mayor for several years, and the current deputy mayor, Mr. Ciccarelli. I think, Mr. Giannetti, that if your client intends to testify related to, I assume, his argument that the township has chosen not to apply this issue in other places, he needs to reduce to writing exactly what his contentions are and the basis of such, because one of the possibilities is there is a potential conflict here. The Brown Avenue extension project is an ongoing coordinated project between the township and the county, and I think we need to understand that, and I think we need to understand where he's drawing the analogy from Apex, and I think his testimony alone is not enough. Not enough for the board to consider, not enough for the objectors to consider, not enough for the public to consider. And there's also, as I said, the issue I have a concern about, of whether or not there's a potential conflict.
Conflict in what sense? He's not...
He's here on beha, he has done work for the township, which may prevent him from being able to testify on ongoing, related to an ongoing project that may have an impact on whether he can testify in this matter against the township and the board, because that's what his testimony is. His testimony ostensibly is that Mr. Mayhew's determination has, I'm assuming, you can correct me if I'm wrong, assume is not consistent with what may have been done by others, not necessarily this board, and that's why there is no consistency between what's going on now and what has gone on before in the township. Am I wrong with my determination?
Yeah, I think it's more of, like I said, given his experience in the town, has he seen it applied to drainage ditches before?
If he's testifying in, again, I think we need to have a better understanding than simply his oral testimony as to how he's claiming there's an analogous situation, because that's what he's being, you want him to testify to. Dstensibly, he's seen other situations where the township has not applied what is potentially being suggested to be applied in this application. Otherwise, I don't need, I don't think you plan on using his testimony for any other reason on that issue.
On that question, no, we can get that information for you.
Thank you. And I suggest that, at this point, you move on to something else for the moment.
And that's all I have of questioning of Mr. Cook, but I guess, along those lines and on that subject, in my November 29th letter to the board, I requested that Mr. Mayhew and/or Mr. Bernstein, to the extent Mr. Bernstein knows, identify a past situation where the township has applied the stream corridor to a man-made ditch in town.
Well, we're not, first of all, I don't believe the, my office, nor Mr. Mayhew's office, is required to prove or show where it has or has not been. It's definitely not within my purview. Your argument is, it hasn't, it doesn't apply, and the regulations don't allow it. You've got an opinion slightly different from Mr. Mayhew. Who knows what his ultimate opinion will be? I don't believe it is my obligation, nor the board engineer's obligation, to show where it's been used. Every application, as you're well aware, Mr. Giannetti, in your capacity as Chair of Land Use at DePitney, stands on its own. And what may have been done in X doesn't necessarily apply to Y, where the facts are not necessarily the same, and/or the situation is not necessarily, your argument is, the township has never done this before, and the township shouldn't be doing it here. I think that's Mr. Cook's testimony boiled down to its ultimate conclusion, is that the interpretation is wrong.
Yeah, I think...
It's wrong because it's contrary to DEP, and it's wrong because the ordinance doesn't allow for that determination. I don't think I have to prove the opposite. I think, nor does Mr. Mayhew. Mr. Mayhew is entitled to his professional opinion, currently, and whatever he ultimately may or may not determine after the testimony of your client and the objector's situation and the like, but I don't think we have to prove the negative.
So again, just to be clear, too, it wasn't offering the testimony that the town's never done that, because I don't think Mr. Cook could testify.
No, you asked me whether or not, show me where the township has applied this ordinance to a man-made. That's not my obligation, nor Mr. Mayhew's. Your contention is, you disagree, not you, I mean, for phrase, this is not you and I, your client disagrees, and his expert concurs, that the determination of Mr. Mayhew at the time of his opinion and his current one... of his opinion and his current one is incorrect and the board should ignore it. Am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
Okay.
But I think, but I think it's a legitimate question. This application's been pending for a number of hearings. The first time the stream corridor ordinance relief from this ditch only came up when we were way into the application. We're disagreeing in the application. I think it's a legitimate question to ask, have you applied it to this situation before?
Mr. Giannetti, we, Mr. Mayhew and I will have a discussion about it, and if we choose to answer the question, we will ask for where it came up in the course of events. Planning board applications, and you've sat through two this evening before you got up tonight, have a habit of moving, moving targets as they go on. If it got brought up at session number 29 and it's legitimate, it's still legitimate no matter when it got brought up, if it got brought up at the beginning or the end. And you and I have both sat through applications where in the middle of the application, we've seen the infamous aha moment on both sides of the aisle. So I would like not to try to indicate that this, I'll put this in quotes, late situation makes it any less or any more important wherever it turned up in the application. I gather Mr. Cook is done with his testimony?
Yes, he has no further test, direct examination.
Mr. Chairman, it is five minutes to 10. I realize I have asked for a couple of extensions this evening, and I suspect the board is willing to go a few more minutes longer, but I'm assuming that all the objectors have questions, and the board may have questions, so I would suggest the board asks his questions and let's see where we are.
Okay.
Should I turn it over to our professionals? Anything to question at this point, but?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna have to talk into the mic, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cook, you earlier discussed the definition in Hillsborough Township Ordinance 188-3 for stream. And you mentioned your opinion about water course. The word water course is in that definition. Is the definition of water course contained in the Hillsborough ordinance?
Uh, no, it's not. It's just the word water course.
Is the word manmade contained in the definition of a stream in the Hillsborough ordinance?
No, it's not.
Is the word natural contained in the definition in the Hillsborough Township ordinance?
No, it's not.
Um, I already know the answer to this question, but you've, you've gone to the site and you've, and you've looked at this feature in question, correct?
Correct.
And I think I heard in your testimony, this feature terminates at an intersection with a tributary to the Roche Brook.
That's correct.
And I believe you've mentioned it has banks.
That it does.
And it has a channel.
Yes, it does.
And it has a source.
The source is the outlet of the stormwater inlets.
If the, and I've been to the site as well, and I noticed, in fact, we were both standing there when we saw there's a head wall at the
Correct.
At the farthest upstream point, we'll say, from the Roche Brook tributary. If, if the head wall wasn't, and you've mentioned the head wall is, and of course, we don't have detailed drawings, we saw, both saw some inlets on site, and we assume there's storm pipe collecting water from inlets and leading to that head wall.
Correct.
Safe assumption.
Correct.
Do you know if there weren't inlets on the site and there wasn't a storm piping, do you have an opinion where the stormwater would flow?
That would, in my opinion, that would be based upon the topography. I believe that the way that the topography is, that the developed parking lot and storage area for the vehicles pitches down towards those inlets that then, you know, combine everything, discharge them into the, the origin of that ditch to then convey off to the, to the brook. I would assume if there weren't those inlets there, we would probably have overlay and flow.
And if we had overlay and flow at some point, would you assume that that overlay and flow was entering the ditch at some point then?
We'd really have to look at the, at the topo on that because obviously the, the topo of the existing development pitches down towards those, those inlets.
To help, to help the board and the public, when you mentioned the topo, I know you and I understand what you're saying, but generally when runoff hits the ground, it's gonna move perpendicular to contour lines.
That's correct. It's gonna flow to a lower elevation. Correct.
Thank you. So if we looked at the topo on the site, that would help us identify which direction the stormwater runoff was heading?
Correct.
Okay. It might be helpful if we looked at, there is an LOI that was issued, and it has some topography on that plan. Maybe that would help to look at that drawing?
The, the approved wetlands survey map referenced in the LOI?
Yeah.
Mine's pretty small. Oh, you have it up.
Mr. Coys has put that, maybe Mr. Coys, if you, if I can just say, David, if we're comfortable, could you scroll over to the bottom right, just so everybody understands what drawing we're trying to show on the screen? And I can already tell it's so whited out. I don't know how, Mr. Cook, or are I gonna be able to see any topo or contour lines?
It is a very large document, so it's just gonna be a little bit slow.
Yeah, but my issue is, my issue is you can't identify contour lines from that exhibit. So we might have to try to get a darker print or something onto the, the screen for the next meeting. Well, that, that does look better, the screen on the side. If, Mr. Coys, if you could.
Where would you like me to go?
If you could just pan the screen up a little bit. So we're missing that the northern part of this is the tributary to the Roche Brook. In the center of the drawing, to help everybody, this is the DEP issued LOI. So you could see at the northern part, as Mr. Cook has testified, this, this feature we're discussing connects with the tributary to the Roche Brook. But if you could pan, David, so that we can see more of the southern portion, I guess?
Okay, we're panning.
And if we could stop right there, and I don't know how to do this without, but just, as Mr. Cook and I were saying, if these, these dashed lines right here are contour lines, which is, we call the topography, they're identifying different elevations, usually in this case, looks like every one foot is identified. And as Mr. Cook just said, when rainfall hits the ground, it's gonna move perpendicular. So, Mr. Cook, would you say, as I'm trying to explain on the plane here, there's a 95 contour, 94, the water's gonna be moving sort of northwest towards the ditch in that, in this particular that I'm demonstrating?
Yeah, Mr. Cook, is it possible to pan further up? You know what, Mark? It, it looks like the actual, that, that topo that's on that wetland survey might not represent exactly what the existing conditions are out there. Okay? Because that, you know what I'm saying? The, the storage area, does it show, does it show the parking lot?
So, yeah, Mr. Cook and I would like to see more. So here, just to help the public and the board, Mr. Cook and I have both talked about a head wall at the, at the southern end of this water feature. And that head wall, it's not labeled, but it's gonna be red at this point. Would you agree?
Correct, correct.
Yes. So the head wall there, and if, David, if you could pan the screen up a little bit more, what we'll start seeing is
That direction? Go down?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, and I believe when we were walking out there, this is one of the storm inlets. It's not labeled, but there's a storm inlet on site, and we, and we believe that there's probably a pipe from that inlet to that, to the feature. And then we believe there's some additional, as you keep, David, if you can keep, hand it up.
Yeah, so that, that, the existing parking area for the vehicles is kind of roughly drawn in there. I believe that, that parking area actually goes further back to the north, or at least its vehicles parked further back to the north now.
But if you could stop right there while the, and then this looks like we're gonna see another storm inlet. But generally, what we're, what I think we're agreeing is if water fell in this area, it's gonna run perpendicular to the contours and maybe head over to this inlet right here.
That's, that's correct.
And as I was trying to say earlier, you know, if the inlet was there, not there or plugged, then this runoff is gonna continue to the lowest point, it's gonna flow north. As you can see, these contours start directing it towards that water feature.
That's correct.
So the, the source of water for the water feature is, could be partly the head wall, partly from storm pipes, and partly from runoff from the surrounding areas, in your opinion?
Could you repeat that? There were some double negatives in there, I'm sorry.
Well, let me, let me back up one. You would agree that water flows at least periodically through this feature?
Of, of course, yes.
There was water flowing the day we were both there?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the source of that water, in, in your opinion, would you agree, it could be partially from piping, from storm inlets, but it could also be partially from overlay and flow from the surrounding areas?
Um, I guess based upon my observation, Mr. Mayor, I, I did not see any indication of any kind of concentrated overlay and flow going into that ditch from, from either side. It seemed to me that, that the whole origin and source of that particular ditch was that head wall, was that pipe that collected water from all of those inlets there. I did not see any, any concentrated overlay and flow that would, you know, that would indicate that we had a definitive flow from any of the surrounding areas into that ditch in and of itself. I think the drainage area is kind of small for that.
Could there be sheet flow across the, based on the contours and topography we're talking, water's gonna, and David, it's better if you let us see more of the bottom, the southern part. Based on the contours that we're discussing how water flows, is it possible there's overlay and sheet flow heading in that direction?
I would say that that overlay and sheet flow would have to be pretty extensive to get through that area and into that ditch, um, you know.
If the inlets were clogged, where would the overlay and flow go?
It would ultimately follow the topography, and it would ultimately have to go into the ditch.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all the questions I have for right now. If I could, based on other testimony, other questions, follow up at some point later, I'd like to reserve that opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coys?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Board members?
Following along his line of questioning, could the ditch have been there originally in some form or another and then been enhanced by Mr. Shockley to allow for water to drain more efficiently down to the Roche Brook?
In, in looking at past aerials and, and including soil surveys and so on and so forth, old soil surveys from the 1960s have a tendency to show all indications of drainage features and so on and so forth. In, in no former old aerial or map that had, did I see any indication of a water feature there?
None whatsoever.
None.
But the topography would indicate that it would have done so.
The topography would indicate that there could be overlay and drainage going in that direction.
Which could be why he chose?
Probably.
To enhance what was potentially already there, to some small degree.
Perhaps, being the lowest area, that would probably be the most relevant part to have drainage go down to, yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I assume that the objectors are going to have a number of questions based on the colloquy during Mr. Cook's testimony. We are back here in two weeks. Well, no, Mr. Cook is not back here in two weeks, I'm gathering.
We were hoping we were gonna be able to complete Mr. Cook tonight and get to our planning on the 8th. Given it was a narrow scope, but I didn't realize, I knew there was other stuff, I thought some of it would be quicker.
And there will be other stuff on the 8th, so.
Um, and he's not available on the 8th, and I also don't wanna start our planner until we complete Mr. Cook.
Then I'm assuming you're asking for a date in March?
Yeah, uh, yes, I believe 22nd was previously taken.
And an extension too?
Yes, I guess once we understand what the schedule looks like.
Mr. Is there any spots on there in March there?
He had when he started here.
I have some here, thank you. That's true. Could we take, could we take a two minutes?
Why not? Everyone else has.
Day five guys is closed anyway, so.
So has everyone got a huddle around you, David, just to compare calendars? So, Mr. Giannetti, what's the time of decision extension till?
Uh, we can give a time of decision April 1st.
Okay. All right.
Just, just as a clarification, I'm assuming that we would be able to question Mr. Cook about all of his report, other aspects, other, other parts of his report.
You get to cross-examine, yep.
Okay.
It's on the record, yep.
Great.
Okay.
All of this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all. This is an extension of this hearing till March 7th, 2024, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard, they're gonna split it with another application. They'll go first, and the time of decision extension to April 1, 2024. And for the public's edification, my, my boss is telling me that there will be no application, there will be no hearing on this application on February the 8th. With no further notice.
So with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scobough?
Yes.
Deputy, excuse me, Committeeman Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ciccarelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
He moved.
Okay. Musical cheers. Okay, so, just to remind everyone, we do have a meeting next week, February 1st.
We have a two meet, we have a meeting next week and the week after.
Yeah, but I only wanna do one at a time.
Yes, we have a meeting next week with another warehouse application.
No, don't say it.
I said it, sorry, shoot me.
So with that, I will
Not named Homestead Road. Uh, well, not beginning with the word Homestead, even better.
Motion adjourned.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see everyone next week.
Gentlemen, for those of you who will be here on ladies